If you would please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Dahlketter.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Viall.
Here.
Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
With, I'm sorry, with a request to pull item number 22 off consent and on to regular.
So moved with that request?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion on that? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that takes us to special presentations on the council agenda, item number 24, a presentation by Faith Regional Health Services regarding their expansion project.
Sign in, Eric.
Yes, please.
Okay, hi guys. Thank you so much for having me today. I really wanted to just talk to you guys about what we're doing at the hospital and kind of create that conversation to be able to ask questions. You guys are the leaders of our communities, so I really wanted to be able to educate you on what we're doing and why we are where we are right now. So to be able to do that, when I first, I've only been with the hospital for about six months now. When I first got to this position, I really wanted to understand where we were, why we were doing everything. Just like any expansion, you really need to understand kind of the dynamics around everything. So I wanted to give you guys just a brief history. I know you guys were probably, a lot of you were here around some of the changes that we've made. But you know, since our merge in 96, you know, back then, we wanted to really recognize, you know, when we merged the hospitals, it was, okay, what are we keeping at the West Campus, what are we keeping at the East Campus, which is now West Campus, which was the Lutheran Hospital, and East Campus was the Catholic Hospital. You know, back then, we kept outpatient where on the East Campus and inpatient on the West Campus decided from 96 to about 2000, which was our first expansion, that it wasn't working. We wanted to put all of our surgical facilities on the same campus. And so that was the mindset around our first expansion. Back in 2000, we wanted to not only get all of our surgical facilities on one campus, but also provide a place for us to grow. We were maxed out on capacity at that time. In 2003, that was the first time with the hospital that we were able to actually identify a community need and directly respond to it, to reiterate how important it is to have local leadership making this decision. You of all people know how important it is to be able to see a need in the community and directly respond and react to that. And so in 2003, that was our purpose. That was what we did. So we saw that we were outgrowing our Carson, or it wasn't Carson Cancer Center at the time, but we were outgrowing our cancer center. And to best serve our patients, we wanted to continue to grow that and add medical oncology. But we also, through claims data and through just data that we had gathered from our patients, we had three times the national average of heart disease in this area. And so we decided, hey, we need a cardiologist. And so that was our first example of really being able to identify a community need and directly respond to it. And so in 2009, that was our last major expansion. That was our bed tower expansion. And this was the first time that we really prioritized patient experience in our business plan. And so anything from the color of the wall, the walls in that building, to the volume of the intercom system was all centered around actually having a healing and good positive patient experience. And in addition to that, we also got electronic health records, which we've now implemented in all of our outreach clinics, including our urgent care. So if you were to go to any of our specialists, and you were to need to go to an urgent care, or one of our outreach clinics closer to your home, they have access to all of your records that you've had at Faith Regional, which is a huge, huge benefit to our community. So that kind of brings us to where we are today. Why did we decide to expand in the first place, and how did we get that idea? So we kind of started, you think of the idea of Walmart and why they're so successful. It's because you go to Walmart, you can grocery shop, you can buy clothes, you can, you know, get your medications, everything in one fell swoop. And that's the way the medical industry is moving, is to be able to make it as convenient as possible, get everything done in one place. And you know, through claims data and through data we've gathered from our patients, we've recognized that we're going to have a need for roughly 45 new physicians over the next three to five years. And so we're actively recruiting for these physicians to come to our community. And we have a place for, we had space for one of them. And so we went through and we continue to go through trying to identify properties in the community and renovate them. But with 45, a need for 45, that's a pretty significant amount of property that we would need. And so that's when the idea of actually building a building came roughly three to four years ago. So we've started building, as you guys can probably see, that property was acquired about 10 years ago from the leadership at the time. And so we started building, and it's four stories high. It's about 109,000 square feet. If it's 109 square feet, that would be pretty small. 109,000 square feet. And it'll have a skywalk connectivity from the surgical center to the main campus. So it'll be a lot safer and easier for our patients and physicians to go back and forth. So I'm going to go through the floors fairly quickly. I want to give you guys an opportunity to ask questions and be able to participate in that. You guys are the leadership of our community, and so we definitely want you guys to be informed with what we're doing. So the first floor is going to be a surgical center. And currently, we have, it's about roughly 11,000 square feet. It's located in our north building. If you guys are familiar with the medical industry in general, it's all moving to outpatient, less invasive. You know, the less time you have to spend in the hospital, the faster you're going to heal, just statistically speaking. It's a lot cheaper for the patient and for our services as well to keep people moving through and in and out as fast as possible. So it's going to be amazing what you'll see in the next five years, what people can do in outpatient services. And so we're, you know, purely to accommodate the amount of physicians that we're going to be recruiting, we're going to need more space. But we'll also be wanting to improve our wait time as well. We have, our wait time's roughly about two weeks long, which isn't bad. It's better than the national average, but it's not where we want to be. So to be able to accommodate these additional physicians and still improve our wait time, we're going to have to have additional space. So we're going to go from roughly 11,000 square feet now to about 25,000 square feet, from four to six surgical rooms. And if anyone's received any care in outpatient, you'll know that the rooms, the pre and post-operative rooms are really small, and they only have a curtain. And I see some of you smiling because you've probably dealt with that. For privacy, you only have a curtain. And so our new rooms are going to be a lot bigger so you can have your family in there with you. And they'll also have a little door. Imagine that, where you can have a little bit more privacy when you're talking to your physicians about what's going on. The second floor is going to be orthopedics. And so this is actually one of the areas that we've identified that's the fastest growing in our area. We're going from roughly 3,500 square feet to over 25,000 square feet. The specialists are going to be orthopedics, hand, wrist, and elbow, and podiatry, foot and ankle surgery are all going to be in there. We're going from two to five orthopedic surgeons by 2020. And we're going to be expanding from 10 to 20 patient rooms. And each patient room will be slightly bigger than what we have right now. The next floor is going to be women's and children. This is a really cool setup, actually. The only other setup like this in the state is actually at women's. It's kind of the way things are trending now, where if you're a female, you're able to get all of your stuff done in one place in addition to your kids. And you know, right now, in the hospital, you have to go to three different floors halfway across the hospital. It's kind of hard to navigate, and you're able to get that all done in one place. The fourth floor is just going to be general medical offices. Right now, our medical office average is about 2,500 square feet, and it's going to grow to be about 4,000 square feet. So overall, the project is $43 million. We are hoping our campaign goal is roughly half of that. So we're going to be, we've started initiating a campaign. So we're going to be asking for support from the community to do this and to continue to push our hospital facility forward. And we're hoping to be wrapped up and seeing patients by first quarter of 2019. So it's aggressive, but we're excited and we need it. So that's why we're doing it. So. Do any of you guys have any questions?
I do, Sidney.
Yes.
Not about the new building, but about the bed tower?
Okay.
I know they're working on the top floor, which I think is the fourth floor.
Yes.
Is that just more patient rooms?
No, that's the behavioral health unit.
Okay.
And that's actually going to be one of the best in the region. Currently, it is on our east campus. And if you've ever been, it's very hard to get to. And like, we've continued to try, we've really, it's, we've identified a place, we're trying to make it work, we renovated a million times over, and we've just outgrown it. And so this particular floor is going to have additional inpatient areas. A lot of times, I mean, we are full consistently on our inpatients for behavioral health. And so this will allow a more comforting environment. It'll be a lot more spaced out. And the floor itself is going to be a little bit divided between, because when you go inpatient, you go through different stages. And so to be able to be released from the hospital, and so this will allow a lot more comfortable healing environment for them.
And in orthopedics, when you do that, are your physical therapy people and all that still staying at east campus?
For now. We are investigating, you know, different areas to put them. We have a lot of different, we're looking at different properties in the community, some different areas that will be vacant when we do leave, when we do move some of the specialists over. There are going to be some areas that we can renovate to accommodate some of that. It's a pretty big space that they need, so it's a little harder to find. And there's a lot of regulations on height for the physical therapy. So it's a little harder to find a space that would work for that. But we are looking.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
We had rates, Sidney, 45 new physicians projected to be hired on within the next, what, two years?
Yeah, two to five years. We've already got a portion of those signed on. We have, I think, 11 of the 45 already signed on to start next fall and the following fall. So we're going to be growing pretty fast.
That's a lot of growth. And that's good, I think, goes without saying. Good quality healthcare is a major component in a community's quality of life. So to realize that significant of an expansion in the coming year, coming couple of years, it's a big deal for the community. And I heard a statistic the other day, 45% of Faith employees do not live in Norfolk.
Yeah, we have 1,300 employees and 45% don't live in this city jurisdiction. So they all travel every day.
The impact of the hospital is huge, not only for the city, but the entire region. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
All right, that takes us to the public hearing section of our council agenda, item number 25. I will open this public hearing at the request of Oban Group Incorporated to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-3 Service Commercial District on property generally located at the southeast corner of Omaha Avenue and South 13th Street. And to pick off the discussion, Val, would you give us some background here, please?
Yes, thank you. This area here is in the southeast corner of 13th and Omaha. It is behind Perkins, the old Villa Inn area, I believe. And this is where the new hotel is being proposed, that you'll see the preliminary plan development coming after this. But they're requesting C-3 from I-1 because they could do a hotel in I-1, but it would require a conditional use permit. So it's just easier to rezone it to C-3 to have a permitted hotel.
Okay, so C-3 is a better fit for the use. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward to make pop a public comment can do so now. I think we do have developers here. If you guys, if you want to take the opportunity to say anything at this point.
You've heard from me before, so only if there's questions.
Okay, any questions? Council and the Community Development Agency have heard the plans previously?
Have they decided who's going to put their name on it yet?
Not yet. Still working through that. I'd like to know as much as you.
Will be announced. Okay, all right. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I will move to close the hearing and move to item number 26. I look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5523 approving a zoning change from I-1 to C-3 on property generally located at the southeast corner of Omaha Avenue and South 13th Street.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. I think that was pretty straightforward. Any other questions or comments, counsel, on this?
And, Your Honor, I guess the, you know, the good thing about this is that it going from industry, which that was there at a time, but now the area's changed considerably. And although it could happen in industrial, it's probably a much better fit this way. So I don't see that there should be any problems with that, so.
I agree. Seems like a sensible updating and modernizing of the code. Any other questions, counsel? No further discussion. Short title, please, back.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force in effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5523 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5523 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, motion second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5523 carries on second and third.
Okay, that takes us to our regular agenda. And we will move back to item number 22. Would look for a motion to consider approval of the mayor's appointments of Dirk Waite, Zachary Gangware, and Billy Kobe to the Norfolk Planning Commission, replacing Brian Lundie, Barb Marsh, and Sue Beckman, whose terms ended February 2018. New appointments' terms ending February 2021. Look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll open discussion on this. I've had some interesting questions on this. My decision to appoint new planning commission members was based on the fact that current members, Brian Lundie, Sue Beckman, and Barb Marsh, all had terms that ended at the end of last month, February 2018. Each had served several years on the commission. And in my mind, these positions are not and were never intended to be lifetime appointments. I called each in the last couple of weeks to thank them for their service in what can often be a thankless job. I thought they've done, they've all done very well handling some pretty complicated issues that have come up over the last couple of years. I also informed them of my intent to bring some new members on, individuals who had expressed interest in getting involved in civic life and specifically community planning. And in general, I think there's value in bringing new voices and new perspectives onto boards and commissions. And just to give a little background on the appointments, I've appointed Dirk Waite. Dirk's a probation officer here in Norfolk, got a graduate degree in public administration and experience in city parks and rec work and planning. I'm appointing Dr. Zachary Gangware, who is a foot surgeon at Faith Regional. Dr. Gangware has a rural background, and he's also done mission work throughout the world as a surgeon. Billy Kobe is an administrator at Northeast Community College. He's got a law degree and an MBA and has expressed an interest in getting involved in community life, particularly in regional planning. With these changes, Dan Spray, who's was the vice chair of the planning commission, will now be chairman. And I think Dan's done a great job, and I think the planning commission will be in good hands. So that explains my rationale for new appointments to the planning commission.
Your Honor, and I saw that, it all kind of caught me a little off guard that way because if these were people that were considering this for quite some time, the only thing that I noticed when I did see the agenda was that the application dates were within less than a week's time. So.
Which is a, yeah.
You know.
A formality. These discussions with these people had happened over a couple of months. I was told that in order to get all the information for this, the city staff needed, they needed to make an application. So I asked them, and within the last week, to make the application.
Okay. And I guess the other thing that kind of concerns me about the whole situation, and I understand that it's your prerogative to make the appointments with our approval that way, but we had Commissioner Bill Fisher, you know, he just was replaced, and now.
He resigned.
Yeah, he resigned. And so I think it's an eight-member board. And we're basically throwing four new faces, totally at it with little if any, I don't see community or regional planning situations or anything along that lines in here. And knowing what occurs and the growth time that it takes on that, because that's kind of where I got my feet wet when I first started on out, was, you know, it takes some time to get your feet underneath. And suddenly, we're throwing in half of the board, basically with less than six months, less than four months, actually, of any experience in it. I think that's awful drastic, and I guess I don't feel real comfortable with it.
I respect that, councilman. On the other hand, you've had county commission members serving on the commission for years and years. And again, I don't think this was ever intended to be some kind of lifetime appointment. I think in terms of readiness and preparation, these three individuals that I'm bringing forward are all very smart and capable and experienced people. So I have every confidence that they will pick it up with sufficient knowledge to move forward and make their decisions. If I didn't have that confidence, I wouldn't have appointed.
Good. I guess you heard my concerns about it. It's, I, you know, I don't think any of the members on there saw it as a lifetime situation thing. I think that's an overused and sometimes overexemplified reaction that way. So I think we're throwing an awful lot of experience out on my consideration of not much thought.
Well, again, I'm the one making appointments, and I know what kind of thought I put into it. These discussions I've had with these people all indicated their sincere interest in serving, and they're more than qualified in my mind to do the job. And again, bringing new perspectives, new experiences to a planning commission like this is important. I think new blood, fresh ideas, new perspectives is a good, I don't see it as a negative thing.
And I guess I'm not debating that end of it, that new insight isn't good. But the extent that this is going to in such a short time period is problematic.
I guess I don't understand what the alternative would be in bringing others.
Fewer and less.
You had at least one commission member who likely said they were not going to seek the position again, anyway.
I guess I would anticipate, you know, maximum of two.
I know, I've had a few phone calls on the issue. Some people are concerned with the fact that of all the changes going on, the people who are getting changed, it's disturbing to hear people say, why are they letting them go, when? They say, well, you're doing a good job, but I want to replace you. You know, if a person's doing a good job, in my mind, they don't get replaced. And we are going to lose the vast degree of knowledge that if there's some expectations that they're not meeting, that maybe set and discuss that with them. But you just vanish from the job, basically. I don't understand. And throughout, there's a lot of concern in the city as well. And throughout, and it's causing a little bit of stress and concern among the whole staff citywide. Because, you know, no matter whether you do a good job or not, it seems like you can walk in and just say, you're done. You're the same, you're changed.
I appreciate that, Gary. I guess I would remind everybody, this is a volunteer commission. And the terms are three years each. Each person being replaced here has served a minimum of two terms for six years. I think one has served much longer than that, four or five terms. I guess it's a different perspective in my mind. This is about, for me, bringing new people, new voices, new perspectives, onto what is an important body to the city. And so this was never of any kind of reflection on the job that those members did. I told them that. I thought they were thoughtful, handled the job in a serious manner, and was in no way a reflection of their service. This, to me, is simply about bringing new perspectives with new experiences to City Planning Commission on a volunteer commission, serving the city.
I guess what I think I can say to that is, again, the people who were told that they were no longer on the commission didn't have a desire to leave. They were still volunteering.
Sure, sure. And they have appointments based on each term that they serve. So there's, you know, they know going into it that the term that they're serving lasts three years. And then they're up for an appointment or reappointment at the end of that term. So it's a process that's been going on for a long time. People have been appointed and reappointed, and new appointments made to the planning commission for decades and decades. This is not a new thing. Any other questions or comments, counsel? If not, I'd ask for your vote.
Voting in favor of the motion, council members Granquist, Merrill, Dahlketter, Muren, Faust, Viall, voting against the motion, Langy and Jackson. Motion carries.
All right, moving on to number 27 on the regular agenda. Look for a motion to consider resolution number 2018-12 approving a preliminary plan development on property generally located at the southeast corner of Omaha Avenue and South 13th Street.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number
Your honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number, believe you said, 2018-12.
Second that, your honor.
Motion in a second. Val, would you give us some background on the plan development, please?
Yes, this preliminary plan development is back to the zone change that you just approved. They're asking for two things with this plan development. One is the maximum height from 45 to 60 feet, because otherwise they would need to get a conditional use for that. And then also the front yard setback from 40 feet to 25 feet, because the new C3 zoning has a 40-foot front yard setback, and they would have to go to the Board of Adjustment to, to get that variance if they did not do it in the plan development. And I believe the reason for the front yard setback is because of the second lot that they're proposing in the northeast corner, that with that building being there, the front yard setback allows them to move the building forward a bit and gives them a, a double row of parking down the center.
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions for Val on that? Any discussion on this in general? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2018-12 is adopted.
Okay, moving on to item number 28. I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5522 approving a zoning change from I2 heavy industrial district to R3 multiple family residential district on property addressed as 211 West Northwestern Avenue. For background, ordinance number 5522 passed on first reading at the February 20, 20th City Council meeting.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second. Motion second, and Val, again, would you just briefly give us background on this?
Yes, this piece of property, I think people know it as the old depot. That's mostly how it's been referred to. This is the zone change from I2 to R3 so that they can put apartments there, surrounded with I2 on the southeast-west and I2 on the north. And to allow this new zoning to essentially be functional, it also needs to, to go with the plan development, which you saw with the first reading last time. And if this passes here, it will be the final PD will be seen by the Planning Commission tomorrow morning, so that the PD and the third reading will come to you all at the same meeting then.
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions for Val on this, comments?
On that property line on the backside of that, is that, that's a zero setback? From what I understand, the I on the building overhangs the property line, is that true?
That is what their engineer said last time, yes. And the, the plan development is asking for zero, because the building is on the property line. So there is no setback, and so that's what the plan developer also provide relief from.
And those, and those train tracks are used mostly for switching and storage, right?
That's my understanding. I think Shane may be able to answer that a little better, I'm not sure.
What are those, those tracks used for back there? They don't go through, do they?
No.
Unfortunately, I wasn't here last night, I'm sorry, so I'm asking questions now.
No, Councilman, no, that's an active rail yard there. Most of the activity in the rail yard appears to be to the west, but that, that rail line, there's a series of tracks in the rear of the depot there that have some cars unannounced. They appear to be hopper-style cars that have been there for some time, I don't know how long, weeks, months, or years, I don't know, but they, they're currently right in the rear of that. And the tracks do not transsect First Street any longer. They used, they used to go back there, obviously, to serve some of that industrial area in years past to the east of First Street, but that no longer is the case.
Didn't, who was I talking to? You said they put a lot of money into refurbishment back there at one point in time, like a little over a million dollars, so that they could have the switching yard back there, the storage?
I, I believe that to be true. I, I railroad transportation, I'm just going back in my memory, Jim.
If I can, yes. The Railroad Transportation Safety District, less than 10 years ago, invested a little over 1.16 million in redoing the access to that specifically at the request of industry so that there was storage space back there. That entire area to the east was not accessible at that time, and so we as, you know, the railroad transportation history, if you, if you look on your tax statements, that's something that we all pay taxes towards. And part of, one of, one of the things that I'd heard is that we hadn't made much investment in it. Well, to my mind, 1.16 million in less than 10 years is a sizable investment. And it's saying that, you know, we're turning this into a, a switchyard that is a switchyard. And the difference between a switchyard and a railroad track is, is considerable. A railroad track, as, as you see, that runs past many of the houses on the way out to New Core is a, is a single line, and is a manned engine that moves up and down that, whereas the switchyard, if you just look on their signs before you go into the place, tells you that, one, you're not supposed to be in there trespassing, and two, that the, the trains are run remotely that way, so people aren't in the front seeing it. And so, yeah, it's, it's, it's a industry or industrial use of an area that was requested, and we, we as citizens invested significantly into it, and, and my opinion, this, this is basically saying, well, you know, you invested in it, but we're going to put, we're going to put residential right next to a, to an industrial track. As I noted the last time, I, I, I see no place that that makes any sense. It's, it's one of the poorest planning decisions that if, if this body decides to move forward with it is, is, it's just incomprehensible, in my opinion.
I had some concerns about it being a historic site, and they'd like to see it put into, into a historical, you know, site, which, you know, if it goes further than, that'd be fine, but, yeah, as far as residential, seems like there's a lot of concerns there, especially the tracks 21 feet to the center, behind the building, that they would plant, that they would have to store ethanol tanks back there, and you would have a leak or, or worse shape, you'd have an explosion, that wouldn't be a good situation. And I know that's, you know, all hypothetical, but they, you don't ever, you never think that you're going to have that type of explosion, or you didn't think that propane can go blow up either.
True, Gary, I would note there is existing residential in the area already, you know, so this is not, it's not like we're talking about a set aside industrial tract. There's, I, I think you have to look at what currently is in the neighborhood as well and take that into consideration, because you don't have industrial on that track right now. You have commercial, you have residential nearby. It's, the reality of today is that it's a mixed-use neighborhood. It's zoned for industrial designation right now. You talk about preserving historical facade. If we left it that way and industry moved in, do you see any way that facade or that building would be preserved for its history?
If, if you zoned it that, yeah. It just wouldn't be a matter of, of making it apartments or C3 zoning, and having people actually live right there on it. I mean, there's a lot of nice buildings, it's not going to make good apartments. It would be in an area that would be more conducive to, to apartment complexes, so that's just my thought, you know? With the tracks right there, with the already being zone industrial, with the steel recycling right there, trucks going in and out of there on the backside of that, trains on the backside of it, I just don't see where it's conducive to be C3.
Not C3, it's R, correct?
R3.
R3.
R3, okay.
So, and I, and I guess that, that comes to, if, if you're finished.
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay. That, that comes to some further investigation that I looked at some of our sister cities across the, across the state of Nebraska. If you look at Fremont, if you look at Columbus, where the switching yard is, does not have residential abutting. It does have commercial, and as I stated last time, I have no problem with this changing to, to a commercial use that way, because you, you don't have people sleeping there and, and doing those, those things that way. And commercial would allow for, for that, you know, if you, if you're talking the historical bit of it, it would allow for, I mean, Columbus's development around there is, is specifically a good picture of what could, could occur there. So again, to, to say that R3 is the only thing that should be occurring here, I, I think is wrong. It should not be occurring next to industrial. I do not have those same concerns with commercial.
You know, I, I thought about that, Councilman, and there's been various uses of this building over the years, putting a restaurant, a nightclub, which apparently operated under conditional use permit, given the zoning the way it is. But the likelihood of a, of a train car tipping over or something hap, happening like that is just as good during the day with a restaurant full of people or a nightclub full of people well into the night as it is in the hours between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM or whatever. So I, I, I don't see the congruity in that, that argument. You know, to me, as a community, we've talked for a number of years about housing shortage, and it's been a discussion we've had ad nauseam. And within the last year, 18 months, we've seen a lot of new activity, and we have new developers coming to town, wanting to do some things, wanting to add to what's in, in great shortage, high-quality rental, and at the same time, help redevelop and revitalize an older neighborhood. And for us to simply say, no, that doesn't work here, even though you'll be, what you want to do is right between commercial enterprises and across the street from a residence, that makes no sense to me. It's either one or the other. We have a housing shortage and we need to, to meet it and invite and be welcoming to businesspeople who wanted to develop in this town or not, or say, no, we will never change. And this is the way it is.
Well, and I think that's oversimplifying what I stated, and, and what we're stating as a, as a municipality that way, because I, I think just purely the, the approvals that we've allowed and set up for on, on multiple-family housing, on single-family housing, on apartment housing, and on other development indicates that we do care for housing in this town. What, what this is telling me is that we don't really care that we have poorly planned and that we, we, we put housing next to industrial. That's, I mean, that, that's not a contradiction. It's only a contradiction if, if you want to call it that, so.
Val, can you remind us what the Planning Commission talked about around their concerns for this?
Their main concerns were the railroad being so close to residential and having our zoning abutting industrial.
But they majority voted in favor for this?
It was a 71 vote.
It was, because they went down the route and spoke about the city taking this area and potentially changing it to a mixed-use district, so the zoning map then wouldn't look bad. I mean, you wouldn't have R next to I, you would have R in mixed use. And so I, I think they said yes, because they were thinking the city is going to change this neighborhood.
Not just because it wouldn't look bad, but because it's a pro usage of a modern-day neighborhood, would be my opinion. And yes, there's been discussion about a mixed-use designation in this neighborhood, reflecting what it is now. I would point to information that's in people's packets about neighbors supporting this change. You have, it's not like we've had a flood of calls from people opposing in the neighborhood saying, you can't do this. It's been the opposite. People welcoming the change in the neighborhood. Are we, are we able to listen to those voices?
I, I think though, that it should be pointed though, that those are all commercial and, and/or businesses that, that, short of the motel, which we had this discussion last time about why it probably developed there, short of that, they're, they're all businesses that are, are fine in that zoning location there. And so, you know, is it not our job to make sure that appropriate things occur? I, I believe the Planning Commission also probably was not aware of the significant investment that, that we as a community had made in extending and developing that back, that area back there. Again, we stuck over 1.1 million dollars to make that accessible, to make that usable. And now we're saying, that's, that's fine. It's, it, it, did, did we not read and comprehend what, what Union Pacific was stating in their letter of February 5?
Any other comments, questions, Council? If not, short title, please, Val.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance 5522 on second reading, council members Dahlketter, Muirin, Faust, File, voting against the motion, Granquist, Langy, Merrill, and Jackson.
I would vote yes to break the tie.
And then motion carries. Ordinance carries on second reading.
All right, that moves us to item number 29. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5524 amending section 18-1 of the code to add Embrace Park to the list of parks defined in that section.
Your honor, I would offer for consideration ordinance number 5524.
Second.
Okay. Mike, can you talk about that?
I really don't have much to add to the short title. I think that's one of the, I think that the, one of the, one of the, I see Pat back there. I think one of the reasons this came about is of seeking a grant or, or something and trying to refer to the area that came to mind, that came to the place that the Embrace Park needs to be. to the area that came to mind, or came to the place that the Embrace Park needs to be added to the ordinance.
Okay. Housekeeping effort, any discussion on this, questions, comments? If not, short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, two men, section 18-1 of the official city code, to add Embrace Park to the list of parks defined in that section, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5524 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5524 on second and third. Second.
Okay, motion on second to suspend the rules. Before we vote, let's say this, I stopped at Embrace Park over the weekend. Saturday, weather wasn't great, but it was full. There was a ton of people there. And again, it can't be overstated how welcome of an addition that was to our park system and to officially codify that. Now, I think we should all be proud of it. And again, thank you to the citizen engagement and the partnerships that were necessary to get this done. So, anyway, that said, no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5524 carries on second and third.
Item number 30, I'd look for motion to consider approval of ordinance number 5525 creating paving district number 510, which provides for paving of Westbrook Drive from 127 feet north of Abbey Road northerly approximately 370 feet, and McCartney Avenue from Westbrook Drive approximately 230 foot west.
And I'll make a motion for consideration approval, ordinance number 5525.
Second, your honor.
Okay, Steve, will you give us some background on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, and as stated in the agenda item there, this is for the project on the east side of town, Westbrook Drive, it'd be, excuse me, Walters East Knoll's 12th Edition, and it would be for a portion of Westbrook Drive approximately in the vicinity of Abbey Road, and then extending approximately 374 feet to the north, and then also McCartney Avenue from Westbrook Drive approximately 230 feet west. The plans have been prepared by Dick Johnson Engineering here in town. They have attached, is a letter requesting from the engineer, the creation of the district. Quite a bit of development going on over there, and we're certainly anxious to see this move forward.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Any questions there? Not, short title, please, back.
An ordinance creating paving district number 510 in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein, and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5525 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion second to suspend the rules, any discussion on that? None, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5525 carries on second and third.
Item number 30, I'd look for motion to consider approval of ordinance number 5526 creating paving district number 511, which provides for paving of Mimick Drive from 127 feet west of Westwood Drive to approximately 357, 357 feet west, and Windsor Way from 120 feet north of Mimick Drive to approximately 840 feet south southerly.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5526 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, again, Steve, give us a little bit on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, received request from the developer's engineer on February 26th to create the paving district. This would be for the Wyndham Hills 2nd Edition in the northwest corner of town. This would create about, a little bit short of 1,000 feet of paving, approximately 720 feet on Windsor Way, and about another 220 feet on Mimick Drive. Again, been working with the engineer on those plans and would request the press approval of that.
Okay, accommodation of new development, any questions, comments? Okay, none, short title, please, back.
An ordinance creating paving district number 511 in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein, and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5526 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would offer that we suspend the rules and vote ordinance number 5526 on second and third.
Okay, motion second to suspend the rules, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5526 carries on second and third.
Okay, number 32, I'd look for motion to consider approval of change order number one with Elkhorn Paving Construction Company for the Embrace Park Project 2017 for a net increase of $26,346.06.
I'll make the motion.
Second, your honor.
Okay, and Steve, will you address?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, we advertise for bids on the Embrace, larger Embrace Park project, which includes a multi-use field, a parking lot, and grading for the splash pad area. That was advertised and awarded in September of last year. That contract, after awarding that contract, the city had further discussions internally about some site sidewalk and ADA parking relative to that site with its function relative to our ADA community. As part of that discussion, we decided it would be appropriate to add or modify that existing parking lot on the west side of the YMCA to include several ADA parking stalls. That's going to require some removal of the existing curb and gutter and parking lot area. And then, we're going to put a sidewalk, I believe it's an eight-foot sidewalk on the backside of that parking lot that would extend all the way up to Benjamin Avenue and connect into the new parking lot. So, the quantity changes here are primarily related to the additional sidewalk, approximately $18,000, and then about another $5,000 in there for various ADA, the ADA signing, the ADA curb stops and so forth, and then a little bit additional work there for the grading associated with the sidewalk.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Any questions on that?
This, Steve, is just all, the big chunk of it actually is the sidewalk end, from what I'm seeing, it looks like we went through.
Total change orders, 26,000, and the sidewalk, the concrete portion of sidewalks, about 18, 18 and a half, and then you have the grading work associated with that, so that's.
Any further discussion? Not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 33, I'd look for motion to consider city council approval of the plan specifications and engineer's estimate on file in the city offices for paving district number 510 Walters East Knoll's 12th Edition, and paving district number 511 Wyndham Hills 2nd Edition, projects and authorization for the city clerk to advertise for bids.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second, your honor.
Okay, and Steve, again, I'll turn that over to you.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, council members, we have been working with Dick Johnson to finalize the plans for these two paving districts. We have received the final set of plans with our comments amended there, too, and we would recommend approval of those for bidding.
Okay. Further discussion, council? None, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, carries.
And item number 34, I'd look for motion to consider city council approval of the plan specifications and engineer's estimate on file in the city offices for street overlay 2018-1 project and authorization for the city clerk to advertise for bids.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second.
Okay, motion second, Steve, once again.
This is kind of one of our more substantial projects for this year. It's a mill and overlay of several sections of street around the community. I will read through those, kind of in order of the map from top to bottom that was connected there. Victory Road from Benjamin Avenue north to Magnet Drive, that would be an overlay. We would maintain the existing section and not mill that. Benjamin Avenue from the railroad tracks east to Victory Road, and that would be milling two inches and overlaying that. Norfolk Avenue, 9th Street to 14th Street, mill and overlay. First Street from Bluff Avenue to Northwestern Avenue, again, that would be mill and overlay. 5th Street from Monroe Avenue to McKinley Street, that is intended to be mill and overlay. We may consider just overlaying that and maintaining the existing section. And then McKinley Street from 5th Street to Tahazuka Entrance, again, that's, would be just an overlay in that area. Those are the projects, we are in the process of finalizing those plans right now. As we, as we look at our budget for the year and look at potentially some additional costs, additional projects that we might want to do in the system, I would probably look to hold back on Victory Road and the First Street, First Street North, looks like I've already pulled that piece. Originally, in the project, we were going to do First Street north of Benjamin Avenue. That, in my opinion, needs a little bit more than just a mill and overlay. We've got some substantial subgrade issues going on in there, and so I've pulled that from this project and want to look at a more permanent type repair in that area. So, pulling that and potentially holding back on Victory Road if necessary for some other projects here in the community. Any questions on those?
Steve, what's budgeted altogether for those?
The budget on this altogether is right around 1.9 million.
Steve, what gave us consideration to do Benjamin Avenue from the railroad to Victory Road? Can you explain why that one was picked?
All of these projects are related to alkali silica reactivity in the concrete. If you look at the concrete, when it's wet, you'd see a lot of micro-cracking in the surface. This is intended to remove that upper two inches of that where a substantial amount of that calcium is retained in the concrete, and then the asphalt overlay then would kind of seal the rest of the concrete below that. That is the general purpose to all of these projects. As I've been visiting with the concrete industry, I, there is some product out there still kind of in the trial stages here in Nebraska, but it's been used quite a bit in some of our surrounding states. Omaha's starting to use it now. It's a sealing process where you, it's a clear seal that goes on. I think something like that potentially on that Victory Road north of Benjamin might be a good solution, also looking at that down on Monroe Avenue in the vicinity of our transfer station. Back, silica, silica, silica reactivity is a function of the natural aggregate that's used in the process reacting with the cement, the cement. And apparently, there was a time in the past where we weren't quite monitoring that. We monitor that pretty heavily now. We get tests from the concrete suppliers that tell us what's going on, so we're aware of that. We also changed our concrete mix design as a function of this several years ago, so we're not seeing that problem now on newer projects.
Okay. Any questions?
So, Steve, when you, when the concrete suppliers or whoever go out and do that test, what, they're doing it certainly on existing streets, and what, do you learn a timeline from that test as to how soon we need to take some action there?
It's, the test itself is done in a lab, so that they go out there to their pits, and they'll pull out your examples, they'll do a mix design, and then they put it in a, basically in a brine solution for an extended period of time and monitor that. The time it takes for a concrete pavement to react, I would say they start reacting as soon as you apply salt to them, if they don't have the right cement mixture in there to avoid that. And cement's porous, it's not a, or concrete's porous, it's not a solid, and you put that brine on there, and it does soak into that upper two inches. Eventually, it could push its way all the way through, and so this is kind of a, the concept here is to preserve, take that upper two inches off, or most of that is, and then preserve the structure of the remaining slab.
Okay, so, in an effort to, so that's a call shot really for you and the street division almost on a yearly basis as to what you should do to best take care of the problem?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, and before we conclude tonight, wanted to make an announcement on a new city staff hire within the engineering department. Mike Mindendorf is joining us, and I'm going to turn it over to Steve to introduce Mike.
Mr. Mayor, Mike wants to stand up over there. I'd introduce Mike Mindendorf. Mike joined us last Thursday as our new assistant city engineer. He comes to us from Columbus, where he's been for the last nine years in a similar role. I'll read a little bit about his experiences there, involved in several projects, street projects, water projects, sewer, sewer and water replacement projects, regulation compliance, and a responsible charge for the Columbus Viaduct project. He's also been instrumental in implementation of the MS4 drainage program over there, and he's been working not just within the Columbus area on that, but he's also been involved at a kind of a state, state level in those conversations dealing with the MS4 compliance. He also provided some FEMA plus frame management assistance, additional duty assistance, building maintenance manager for the city, city health administrator, and FCC compliance administrator. Prior to being with the city of Columbus, he was consulting industry for approximately five years out in the Akron, Ohio area, so he also brings to us some experience with what's he's buying and project management from that perspective, the projects that range from Hawaii municipal projects and state transportation projects. So, very well-rounded individual and very glad to have him on.
Mike, welcome aboard. Very good, we hope to keep you busy. I think we will.
You are.
Okay, all right, very good. With that, that concludes this meeting of the first city council.